And we can call a meeting in order. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming to the July, June meeting of the Board of Education. Y'all ready? Great. So, we can begin tonight. We're actually back in session, we were in closed session a little bit earlier, with our consent agenda items for the night. Can I get a motion for that? Will you have to have a motion before we can change it? Is there a second? Okay. So, some discussion on the meeting minutes of the 22nd. We need to revise that to reflect current data on the report. It says March. So, I'd like to make that one change. Anything else on here? Consent, will you have that in? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there you go. Alrighty, um, next, will anybody here for community comments? Okay. Then we can move on to our administrative reports. Mr. Cookdough?
Okay. Administratively, I would like to say we had a great end of the school year, and I will defer to our administrators for their reports at this time.
I am going to give an update about an exciting professional development opportunity that we're going to participate in, in July. Twenty-three of our staff members will be participating in professional learning communities. We are going to return to Solution Tree in Minneapolis and continue our work toward implementing professional learning communities within our school district. So, um, it's a three-day workshop, and we will listen to some of the most well-renowned speakers in implementation of PLCs, and it's going to fit really well with, um, some new things that we're going to be doing this coming fall. We, as an administrative team, we sat through a demonstration today of Illumination, which is a data, kind of a data-mining program, and we are very excited about it because it's going to streamline the PLC process as, as teachers work together in teams to meet the needs of our individual learners. So, very excited about it, and we just wanted you to know that we will be journeying off to Minneapolis in July. Twenty-three staff members, the administrative team plus teachers.
Great.
Thank you.
And I'm going to piggyback right off what Cheryl said. When we attended the PLC convention last summer, we, um, the Solution Tree as an administrative team, we just got tons of information and skills and brought that back, and with our staff, we started having them meet in PLC teams and doing curriculum work, uh, both at the school level and at the district level. And if you remember, we had one night every week that we met from 3:30 to 5:00 and worked in our PLC teams. What we worked on was the identification of essential standards at each grade level or department. So, take third-grade math, for instance. I might have five teachers. We want to make sure that all five teachers are teaching the same essential standards. Then this year, we will continue that work, but use the essential standards work that we did last year to build common formative assessments. And so, we're helping, we're hoping that the PLC convention this summer will also give us some more skills and ideas. We're going to have Chris Stratton come back and help us with, uh, training with our teachers, and also, as Cheryl had talked about, the illuminate, which is a data, um, tool that will help us also identify those standards, or the standards we have identified, and then help us in the creation of common formative assessment. So, you'll be hearing those three words a lot in the next coming year. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Cookdough?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I do want to mention- That it is summertime, but we've got a lot of activities going on. Hundreds of students attending summer school, and a lot of great activities at the middle school and elementary school, and even early morning, as early as 6:00 AM, I believe, at the high school. So, we appreciate all of our summer school staff, our teachers, and all the students going to summer school.
Okay. Anything else? I think Ms. Myers is up again.
I'm going to be sharing with you the AGR report. As you recall, we have to, um, update the board twice a year. AGR is, um, the old, or the new sage, I should say. So, um, if you want to click through, Dina. So, they're the same goals that we set from the beginning, um, of the school year. We wanted 85% of our children to be above the 25th percentile. So, the easiest way to look at this, this is the information that I presented in the winter, but I think to really see the growth, the best thing to do is to look at the number of children, um, in the fall that fell below the 25th percentile versus the number of children that are above the 25th percentile. So, below the 25th percentile in the fall, 21, and, or 41, I'm sorry, and in the spring, 87%. So, that was reading. This is math. We had 33 children fall below the 25th percentile, and in the spring, 95% of our children are above the 25th percentile in kindergarten. Following that? Okay. So, the next one, Dina. Um, thank you. So, same thing, 85, our goal is 85% of our kids, we want above the 25th percentile, which is pretty lofty. Typically, we, we shoot for the 80th percentile. So, first grade, um, made progress, but aren't quite where we would like them to be. We had 52 students in the fall fall below the 25th percentile, and 63 students in the spring are above the 25th percentile in reading. And in math, we had 21 kids fall below the 25th percentile and made greater gains. In math, we had 84 children fall above the 25th percentile. Our first-grade children are, our first-grade class has a high percentage of children that receive, um, EEN services for reading and language arts. So, we're making gains, and we will continue to work on that. Our second-grade friends, in the fall, we had 42 children fall below the 25th percentile in reading, and at the end of the year, 82% or 82 children were above the 25th, um, above, above the 25th percentile. And in math, we had 24 children fall below the 25th percentile, and in the spring, 92% of our children, um, went above. We implemented a new program this year for math called Dream Box, and all of our children had, um, it, it, it's a software program, and it's on concepts and applications, and all of our students in K-1 and 2 spent two half-hour blocks. It was a requirement.
Daily?
No. Twice a week.
Okay.
Twice a week. So, and what we have found is comparatively to the nation, our math scores have increased, and that was one of the areas that we were looking at due to our third-grade state's results in math. So, we're excited about that. They're not reflective, of course, on our current third-grade, um, math test. And this is third grade, and, um, we had, at the end of the year, 91% of our students met the, the goal in reading, and 90% of our students met the goal in math. So, nice progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Cheryl?
All right.
Okay, we can move on to our informational updates. The QZAB, Mr. Cookdough?
Okay. As you remember, we had a special board meeting in May to get approval for a qualified Zone Academy bond, uh, for financing, which would have been a great thing, but as we found out, we had received, uh, some information from Department of Public Instruction that they believed we would qualify, but they did, they do not use district numbers, they used building-level numbers. And this would have been a bond for the Family Consumer Science, uh, upgrades, and so, uh, because our number that fell from 37%, we needed to be over 35%, and the numbers dropped to the, uh, low 30s at the high school for free and reduced percentages, we no longer qualify for the, uh, the bond, which would have freed up additional funds for the district to use within the referendum money. So, it's, uh, no longer a possibility, and unfortunately, uh, although we passed the resolution for that bond, we're no longer, uh, being considered for it.
Okay. Any questions on that? Makes sense. Okay, let's move on to our action items, and I think we're talking insurance first, right? Insurance deductibles?
Yep. So, this is, uh, what we're asking for action on by the board is, we've, uh, met with Jay Counter, our health broker, health insurance broker, and with, uh, Health Partners, and we did have a little bit, a little bit of discussion in May about a differential for the deductible. Correct me if I say the wrong word on this, but it's a different, a deductible differential, which would be set up actually through activity that the employees do this current school year. And so, there would be what's called the preferred medical plan or non-preferred medical plan for those who do participate, and I want to emphasize it would be not an outcome-based plan, but rather a participation-based plan. So, if employees simply sign up for it and, uh, participate in the plan, there would then be a deductible differential, and I'll defer to, uh, trial and for any further information. Is there anything more? I guess I could just point out the, the dollar figures of, uh, per family. The maximum employee out-of-pocket. It's a $500 differential for, uh, per person or, for single, and 1,000 per family.
So, essentially, our deductible would stay the same as the plan that we had this past year. It's 5,200 for family, 2,600 for single. That's what, if, the plan would be for this year, and then you can choose to participate or you can choose not to, and then the following year, whatever our deductible is at, wherever they come in for bids and whatnot, if the differential is what you've chose, the preferred plan, your, your deductible will be what the district's plan is. I can't promise it's going to be 5,200 and 2,600 next year before 1819. We don't know that. We do know for 1718, it'll still say 2,600 and 5,200. By, I think you have till May, March?
Well, you have to participate in a program by January first.
And then, it's completed by, by-
By the end of March.
End of March.
I think it's the end of February, so they can process it by March.
And then, Health Partners will know who has participated in the health plan, so then for the 1819 school year, if you did successfully complete it and participate, you would be able to choose the preferred plan. If you chose not to participate, then you'd be in the non-preferred plan. That's what it would be.
So, a couple of key points is that the premiums are no different for employees, and the cost is no different to the district. There is no additional cost to the district. The deductible for employees would be the same if they participate. If they do not, the deductible then goes up for individual 500 or family 1,000. In summary.
And that's the key. It's the deductible.
Yeah. So, our recommendation to the board is to accept this, uh, wellness plan, and we'll have wellness information right at the beginning of the year, starting in August, and opportunity for staff to sign up for it at that time.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept that? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll abstain. Because of my employer, so. If anybody cares. Um, all right, next, we will go to our family-
Can I interrupt?
Yeah. Okay.
Can we go back to vouchers?
Uh, we've already accepted those.
Oh. Okay.
That was the consent agenda items?
Oh, I did hear you say it. Forget it.
Okay.
Thought we didn't. Sorry.
You made a motion.
Forget it. We did. I forgot.
Okay.
I was like, I didn't think I did, but I did.
Normally, it's me that messes that up, so I'm glad that you took, took the hit this time.
Sorry.
I know, there's plenty of room yet tonight. All right. Family Consumer Science update. So, we want to talk a little bit about the construction project over there. Mr. Cookdough?
Okay. The board has already approved the construction as part of the referendum for the maintenance and security portion of the referendum for this year. And so, as a separate item, the, uh, company that was chosen to select the appliances for the family consumer education, uh, Family Consumer Science Lab was Hiawatha, and you can see the total bid here, so for new appliances, the pizza oven, the different, uh, appliances in total, it is listed here, and the total dollar amount is 124,000.
Ninety-five.
Is $95,000. Oh, yes. Uh, Hiawatha chef items subtotal, you can see up there is 95,729, and some of the other numbers were moved to the architect, I believe.
Or to us.
Or to, to the district.
The wall oven. George got that at true value.
So, that, I, I want to point out, that's within the 700,000 that we talked about as part of the referendum.
So, what sort of action do you need?
So, we need, uh, since it's this large of an expenditure, we're just asking for board approval to, uh-
Okay. I get it. Can I get a motion to approve that, uh, bid from Hiawatha? A quote? Keith, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Lynn?
That was about three-way time there.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Next is the remodel PowerPoint.
And I will defer to George, our maintenance leader.
Mr. Sigsworth.
I'd love to take credit for the slideshow.
I'm, I'm impressed that you're here and not bass fishing tonight. There's a front moving in.
Grab the mic, too. Thanks. So, Dina, uh, prepared this slideshow for me, and I appreciate it. She did a great job, and after the, uh, the update on the Family Consumer Science Labs, I'll just give a little, uh, a quick little synopsis of what happened in the 2016-17 Maintenance, um, department over the year. So, uh, basically, this is, uh, the start of the project. We had a, an abatement done on the floor, so that's all gone. You can see some of the pretty colors. If you weren't in there to witness some of those, those are actually some peaches.
George, hold your mic up.
Some peaches and reds. Um, and that's the old lighting that we've, we've been, uh, replacing throughout. There's a couple of pretty cool little hangers that we've made to, uh, keep the lenses up. It'll be a great day to see all of those gone at some point, so. Uh, this is a walk-through area, storage, um, that's all gutted out now. This is her office. Uh, here's the area where all the sewing machines were. Uh, as you can see, the, the ceiling grid's coming down. Uh, this is an accordion wall. It's going to be replaced with a glass wall, so she can teach in one area and still be able to, uh, supervise another area. This is a, this is a beautiful picture right here.
I've been wasting that picture for years.
This is, yeah, this is my favorite.
Decades, we should say.
Yeah. Uh, and I should say, on that last side, a lot of those, uh, cabinets went to Rest, the Restore.
Oh, great.
Um, so, not too many of them were in the, went to the garbage.
Well, they're apparently were built, were built well, a lot of them.
Very, very well, yeah.
As opposed to most things in that building.
And this is, uh, this is what the new design is going to be, and just very quickly, the, the big addition is the back walkway, uh, at the high school. We're taking up a good chunk of that where she'll have her pizza oven and more storage, because if you saw all the stuff that she had in there, she definitely needed the room. But, the design is totally different. A lot of doors moved, a lot of doors cut into the outside. It's, it's going to be state-of-the-art. It's really going to be nice. Um, there, this picture's here because that was the original color of the carpet, lime green. Sean, you need a piece for your desk?
How do you know that?
Yeah. Um, that's, some electrical panels there actually be, they'll be removed and, uh, relocated.
Is there more power coming in there?
Uh, there, actually, no, because of the elimination of some items and going to gas with others, we were able to utilize what was there, thankfully. Uh, right now, there's a number of trenches, uh, floors busted up in a number of areas for the plumbing. That's the original electrical there. And there's, uh, the grease trap that they're installing on the other end, but you can see pretty much the whole length of that floor. Um, there, there's plumbing going in and some electrical, uh, items that'll have to be relocated and moved underground and come up in a different area. So, any questions on specifically that room?
Just refresh me from the timeline that we got as to what occupancy day you're looking at on that. I saw the punch, I, I saw a bit of it, but do you know off the top of your head?
August, I believe August 25th is the final date where the punch list has to be-
And then, the teachers will be able to get in and set stuff up?
Yep. That week of in-service, basically, Emily will be able to start setting things up, and I think she'll be sneaking in there even earlier, depending on what rooms are available. Um, but it's on schedule right now. I'm not saying that there hasn't been some hiccups with different things, because there's, there, there have been plenty, but we've been able to horse-trade and reduce some things to be able to, without sacrificing. This is going to be really nice. What do they call it? The kitchen mahal?
Secretary.
Yeah. So, um, any other questions on Family Consumer Science?
Not for you, but for Mr. Cookdough. Would, is there a possibility then, before school starts or right around at that point in time, that we could get, um? Well, yeah, that, that's my second question, that we could get an update or a description of what the academy's going to look like curriculum-wise and what sorts of things?
That's actually in the works for our August meeting?
The curriculum, the catering is done.
Right. I just, I'd like to be able, for us to get it, you know, here's what it's going to look like, here's, here's what our goals are.
We have a catering class, and we've got 20-plus kids that have taken it, so.
Yep. And on our end, I think, just looking at what the outcomes are, what the goals are, what other things that we're going to be able to do with that, I think would be a good, a good update for us. And then, I think the second thing, and Keith said it too, is it would be nice when that project is done and any of the others that we have going on this summer, if maybe right around the first day of school, we could do some sort of open house. Um, I think it'd be good for the community to be able to come in and see where the referendum dollars went, uh, and are going, so that, that they can see some of the visible things. Obviously, they're not going to see consumables in math or, you know, things like that, but they can see those types of things, and I think it's something, even if we only get a few people that might be interested, but it, but I think it's probably a good thing for us to show that off, so people know where their money is going.
I think that's a great idea. We'll work together with high school administration and set up an open house.
Maybe get a piece of pizza.
I'd save some of that green carpet.
Oh, yeah.
I've got, I've got some. Okay. So, we'll roll right into, uh, kind of a maintenance report, and I'm not going to touch on everything, because I would bore you to death, but I'll just talk about, um, uh, one of the big items we did with the energy levy exemption, and that, that's just been wonderful, um, is we replaced the old hanging lights at the elementary school, um, and we put in a similar style, but it's LED, and, um, we're looking at, we were replacing, we were replacing, uh, 32 watts with 17 watts, so it's, it's close to half. So, if we were looking at just per fixture, uh, we're, we're, we were saving, we're saving now half of the, the energy. Uh, before you leave this slide, we did a test run, and I believe, Cheryl, the consensus was to put them up. We, we actually mounted, uh, the fixtures up on the ceiling rather than leaving them hang down like they were in 1965. And they're, and you wouldn't believe the difference in how it opened up that room. It's crazy, and I don't think, I think it was 100% to go up, right?
Including the library.
Including the library. So, the few that we have put, uh, they're hanging like that. If we can't find a teacher that wants to be the odd duck, we'll probably have to raise those as well. I can say that, can I, odd duck?
Hey, you're good. We're not going to have any ducks.
Okay. Actually, if you live around here, it's good to be a duck. Um, these are the old fixtures at the high school. Uh, again, here's some of those creative little hangers that we use, because you can't get replacement, the replacement parts are not available. So, the lenses, uh, were, were creatively, um, attached to the fixture with hangers or whatever they had. Those are still there. We hope to, at some point in time, be able to eliminate those with the LEDs, and some of the, um, rooms that we have done, that's a new room, more of a standard-type trough or light. Uh, and again, we're, we're saving about half the energy going to about a 32-watt lamp, down to a 17. And this is a locker room. I didn't turn on all the lights, but, and I didn't have an, a, a before picture, but the lenses were gone in there. They had just deteriorated, and they were gone, and they were, the ends were metal, and they were rusting from all the humidity in there. So, we have brand-new, um, Paragon fixtures in there with liquid-tight lenses, and, uh, they're, they're, they're really nice. Uh, I'm excited, at some point in time, to look down that elementary hall and put a fixture that is a, uh, ceiling, a trough-type fixture, and I just think that that's totally going to open up.
Like recessed?
Yeah. A recessed trough or fixture where I think it's going to really open up those hallways. So, that's, that's some of the future projects we have. Um, and then, just a few other items that we do yearly. Um, our annual firing, fire inspections were complete on the first week in June. They go through every device in the building and test it, and, uh, we replace any that possibly, um, are bad. We don't, typically, when I'm back here for a fire alarm, the last thing I'm doing is going around to see what strobe is working, so. Annual bleacher and gymnasium in, equipment inspections are underway this week. Uh, they go through cables, pulleys, uh, safety straps, missing bolts, et cetera. Last year, we picked up a, what they call a scarifier, a concrete grinder, uh, and we're working on the trip hazards. There's way, we have a number of, uh, spots over the winter that have come up, and we're going to grind those down, and seems like cities and all over are doing the same thing, rather than trying to bust it all out. Um, the new storage shed and concessions has just worked wonderfully. Um, I think as a concession stand, it's worked great, too. As a storage shed, I don't know where we would've went with all of Emily's stuff, so it got filled right up to the, to the ceiling. Um, high school, some of the main, uh, maintenance issues we deal with, uh, every year, and especially the last year, the exhaust fans are all about the same age, so they're all starting to fail. If we get to them before they totally fail, we don't, we don't have to replace shafts, but a lot of times, we're replacing shafts as well. Uh, the high school fan coil motors, again, they're all the same, uh, age, so we're putting new motors in the, in the fan coil units. Um, middle school heat pumps, that's a word that's been floated around many times. We, uh, we replaced four compressors in, in heat pumps this year, and at least 10 fan motors, uh, and with a number of exhaust fan motors on the roof. Intermediate school, we spent, uh, some time remodeling AIM area rooms and assembling furniture, um, added a kitchen area down there. Um, and in elementary school, uh, we created that Montessori area, replaced carpet with tile, assembled furniture, and mounted some cabinets. So, just kind of a, in a nutshell, some of the big-ticket items.
So, we can probably put this on our Building and Grounds Committee, but, uh, before I forget, are we, do we have plans that we had discussed when we built that new shed behind the high school, that we were going to get rid of the ISO next to the tennis court? Is that in our plans this summer?
Uh, that's, uh, that's high on the list for the new grounds guy.
So, that is on the plans to get rid of that as sooner rather than later?
Both of them.
All right.
Yep.
And then, the other thing is, this is somewhat in the same vein as the, uh, as an open house, but- house, but that, kind of that presentation that George did with the lights and that, I think, what I think might be nice is, you know how we had our posters when people walked into the school about the referendum? It would sure be nice the first day of school in the elementaries to put that presentation on a poster, so parents, when it's meet your teachers' day and things, that they can see again, money that, where the referendum money has been going. I, I think that'd be, you know, some of those pictures, just to show some of the differences in what we've done and how it works. And I would even go so far as to say, one of the things that I think we learned in the survey that we did with school perceptions was that people wanted different avenues to be able to be, learn about what's going on at the district, and they wanted more than just certain academic things. And I think when Tracy, when we put out that first newsletter, those, that would be several pages dedicated to where people's money went, the improvements that we made and the things that we've spent, and maybe some of those pictures, I think, would be really, really helpful for people as well. That's all I got.
Sounds good. Any other suggestions or questions? Definitely stop by and check it out. It's pretty exciting. What'd you call it, the?
Bomb shelter.
There's a lot of concrete going on. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's George.
Okay, now we can move on to handbooks and compensation. You wanna see the agenda? Can you go back to the agenda? There we are. So we begin with compensation and benefits for certified staff, so Dale and Keith.
So, yeah, a comment on the, I guess the salary schedule would be the, probably the highlight for most of those people involved, our teachers or certified staff. Our CPI is at 2.16%, and we're looking at a salary, salary increase of 2.59%. And that's kind of focused on catching up a little bit at the lower levels on our salary schedule. And you'll see the level A, B, and C, those numbers, looking at increasing those numbers by $1,000 per, per cell, if you will. And, let's see, we have the stipend, right? We're looking at a stipend for A, B, and C, right, of $1,000 per employee. And then for all others, D through I would be a $600 stipend. For a total real salary increase of just under $142,000 for our certified staff. Am I missing, I think that's kind of the highlights?
Yep. And then the other thing is, in the eye points, the autism credit certification that was added to that.
And I think that was something new. We had a staff, new staff member maybe, that might've brought something with that, so. So I think that would be the highlights of the certified staff.
Anything you wanted to add on that?
I'll just add that in addition, there were some adjustments on levels of individuals that I'll meet with them individually to discuss. We held many listening sessions with employees in each building with teachers, here at the board level, and also with support staff, and took all of that information together, documented that, and took that into consideration. And then the personnel finance committee discussed numbers and came up with this proposal for this year. Just to clarify, the, not really stipend, but rather supplemental, pay is really what it's called, a $600 supplemental. So some level increases are $3,400, most of them, and then $4,000 and $5,000 to the top level. And for anyone not moving on those levels, there will be a minimum of $600 increase at this point in time. And then, as Dale mentioned, $1,000 for levels A, B, and C.
Can I get a motion to accept those recommendations? Keith, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody wanna discuss that? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move to the certified staff handbook, and I'll turn that one over to Mr. Cooked.
Okay, we have basically a couple of items Dina will have to scroll through in order for me to catch those changes, but some grammatical things and some not real extensive changes. There were some changes just made in April regarding some wording as it pertained to the health reimbursement, no, health retirement account, the HRA.
That one was already done, so it's not gonna be.
That was done previously. And so there were just some grammatical changes. No very big significant changes otherwise within the handbook for certified staff.
Is that put in there?
Yeah, that was one of the ones that was made, was the. That was done previously. Yeah, that's what we thought we were just talking about.
I don't remember.
Okay. So can I get a motion to accept that? Okay, I'll move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Keith, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next is support staff compensation and benefits. Let's back to you guys.
Jim.
Jim?
Okay, basically, for all support staff areas, we're looking at wage adjustments, essentially a minimum of 2.5% wage hourly increases, with one particular area, the parent educators, looking at a 5% increase for this coming year. That was the one group that lagged behind, and our understanding was there had been a rotation, and that would be a larger increase for an hourly rate for those people this current year. If you scroll down a little bit, there's also the clubhouse care increases that we had, and then the shift differential, which was essentially eliminated last year, or rather, the day custodians received the benefit because of the maintenance work that they do. And so there's no longer a differential, because it's the same pay.
Can I get a motion to accept that? Keith, is there a second? Chelsea, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
And I'll abstain from voting on the support staff.
Okay. If you wanna make note of that, please. Next, the support staff handbook. Mr. Cooked, he changes, he changes, is there another word he should, do you wanna highlight?
Yeah, for the remaining handbooks, I don't believe, we worked on it a few weeks ago, but I don't believe we have any changes of substance in the support staff handbook or clubhouse handbook or administrative handbook.
Okay. So I can take a motion to accept all three of those?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Chelsea, any discussion there?
Just make sure the dates are right? Or do we have to change that?
Yeah. Those are basically the updates, the dates, and any grammatical corrections that were needed.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we have working budgets. So this is the, basically the action that we have to take, because we have the interim period between when we legally do a budget and when our budget expires. This is the joy of living in the state of Wisconsin and the way that things are written. So what this is, is for the, for people, when you hear things like continuing resolutions in the, in the Congress, that's what this is. It allows us to continue to operate under a basic budget for the next couple of months. Would that be the best way to say it?
That's the best way to say it.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve a working budget until the main one is passed?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second? There you go. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Insurance.
This was a non-bid year. Usually, we try to bid every other year. And so Mr. Leadholm just did our kind of simple application, turned it in, and we did really, really well. Our premiums basically are the same. There's a few that adjust, but not really because of anything bad, just because of our property value changes or, you know, whatever. So I was thrilled. There weren't a lot of changes. There are two things that I would like your permission or to consider. A few years ago, we accepted a data compromise coverage. Data compromise is if we, as a district or somebody of our employment, were to compromise data that we had, or we did something negligent to allow people. What I would recommend adding is now there's a cyber coverage. Cyber coverage is the opposite end on if somebody were to come and hack into us and obtain personal information or whatnot. Jim and I have talked about it, and over the years, it's just those things that you hear horror stories where they're developed from, and there really was one. WEA and Barron School District had some leaked information. It was kind of scary. Had to do with Google Docs, and we're not a Google Doc school, so Clint was confident that everything was okay with us. But that's kind of hitting close to home and a little bit scary. So because our normal property crime and automobile came in so flat and so level, I think it's a good time to add the cyber coverage to kind of complete our package of data compromise and cyber coverage. It's just one of those things that you really.
Do you think $100,000 is enough?
Because when they consider per incident, do they?
Yeah.
Because per incident, from the seminars I've been to in the last few months, that's like one incident.
It's a starting point for us. We were at $50,000 for data compromise. Again, when we started it, we're like, let's have some coverage. So if you see at the bottom, the package policy says increased data compromise to 100 would be an extra $159. And then to add cyber coverage at $100,000 is 526. Or 256, I'm sorry.
Right. My question is, is, are those amount, coverage amounts, is that even close to what organizations our size have?
It's what Mr. Leadholm recommended. It's what other districts are doing.
Okay.
I can certainly.
I'll believe you. I, I, it just, that seems awful cheap. It just seems awful risky.
I can help.
Like, it's not enough.
I mean, I know, and I don't think it's the same here, but I know in healthcare, the, the fine for HIPAA, for example, if somebody hacked in and pulled out private information, and I don't know how that translates to what we do with our insurance information and private protected health information. I don't know how that works and if it's similar or not. But I mean, you're talking $50,000 to $60,000 per person on a breach, is what the, or a hu, or more.
What we can do is accept this. I could ask Mr. Leadholm to go back and give us quotes for extra coverage, 500,000 or a million or something, and we could do an addendum to our policy if you would like me to investigate that.
If it's on the education end, if other districts are doing it this way, the only reason I would just say, are they doing it because everybody else is doing it that way? Or is there some research that we can have that says, this really is what we need? You know, is there somebody that can give us a?
And I will check with Mr. Leadholm.
And I'm sure even Jim can find those answers out, to do a greater search on that. Jim Leadholm?
Yeah. Yep. I would, I would like to know where.
It seems low. Sneezes and spend that kind of money.
Yeah. It's a starting point. We had no coverage.
Right.
Previously, but it's just one of those things that really now, when you're hearing of things hitting kind of close to home, you hope you never have to have it. But, so like I said, if it's a starting point to put it into our policy, and then we could certainly do an addendum if, if Mr. Leadholm does look at it and say, no, maybe we should do more. I think, you know, conservatively, we should have something, and this would be a starting point.
In my line of work, I look for worst possible scenarios in this. I could just see one student's personal school record being hacked and put on Facebook, and a million-dollar lawsuit coming because of the hack, you know, against us, and we were hung out with a $100,000 policy. It would just, I, I don't think that's out of the realm of probabilities.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion.
They pay me to be a downer on those things.
I would like to make the motion to accept this.
There's just one more.
Was there one?
There's just one more consideration. We have a pollution policy, and that's for our tanks.
Yeah.
And we used to be on a one-year policy, and we would have to renew every year. There is a new company that Crum and Forster, they're not new, they're just new to us. They offer a two-year policy, and the premium for two years, as you can see, we were paying $1,800 for one year, and with the new company for two years, we can get a policy for $2,500. So it's a much better deal, not having to renew annually will be nice. And then there's an additional 1 million defense limit policy addition that goes with that. And that would be, again, is it enough?
It's only enough until you get in trouble.
It's only enough until you have to use it, then.
Right.
But the yellow is what I recommend.
So we can revisit this even in a month? Could, if we, if we cover it like this and then come back in a month or so?
Yeah. And then July or August.
And you may say, you know, this is the best, this is what, this is what they told us, and I'm fine with that, but.
Sure. I just think having something.
Yeah.
Is better than nothing at this point, but we'll certainly research, and I'll give you the price difference. Like I said, this was a starting point, I believe, to.
Yep.
Dip our toe and make us all aware of.
I'm glad you brought that on the radar, because it hasn't even necessarily been on our radar before, so.
Yeah. So those are the considerations that I would ask.
Okay.
You to approve tonight.
I'll make that motion, knowing that we have the rights to go back to it.
So Lynn makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Keith, any discussion on that? All right, all in favors? Isaiah?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Okey-dokey. Goodness, I gotta set the timeout on this better. All right. Next, we are going to curriculum adoption for next year with Ms. Shock.
In our board meeting minutes for May, we had the curriculum documents, but we didn't get it on the agenda. And so we're here in June to ask for approval of the math curriculum for next year, which is 17, 18. And it would be math materials for grade six through high school, through grade 12. And I did, Deana, I just sent it to you on an email, if you wanna bring it up, if that's possible. We have, each of the grades and departments went through all of the processes that they needed to, researching, meeting with their building principals, meeting with teachers. And if you go all the way down to the bottom, to the cover sheet tab on the bottom, Deana, that will give you the total. And so those are the, the areas that we're looking at. The first one, the Pasco, is a bridge building, and that's all STEM-orientated. And then the, the next one is looking at Mr. Vincent and his geometry, or, excuse me, would be, oh, shoot, now I may have to look over here, sorry. Is the advanced algebra, algebra, geo, yeah, that would be, let me get back up here to the top. It is not, it is with Mr. Vincent, but it's the calculus and pre-calc and calc. And then the sec, the third line, which is quite large, but it is calculators, and they are the graphic scientific calculators. And Mr. Basley has had a set and has been using them very extensively, and now we would be ordering two more sets for Mrs. Stevens and Mrs. Anick. Yep. And so they would all have a set to use, and they're really cool. And then the Pearson is our geometry, algebra, pre-algebra, advanced algebra. then the Pearson is our geometry, algebra, pre-algebra, advanced algebra. And, yeah, Pearson is middle school with the CMP, and that is the continuation of using the CMP, which is their Connected Math Project, which they've been using for many years. This is a brand-new version, the third version, or the CMP 3, and it's very, very good. Both, all of these are online textbooks, digital textbooks, with the exception of at the middle school, they did purchase some hardcover books, because they gave us a great deal to buy the books and the online, and so we have classroom sets of those. And also, training comes with all of that, and Mr. Benson and his teachers have set up an August training with our, with the Pearson people. So we are ready to rock and roll. The total cost is, as you can see, $116,464, with many free items for teachers, which is pretty normal.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve that? Keith, is there a second? Chelsea, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the second part of that curriculum is the consumables, and that's really mostly in Mrs. Meyer's building and mine. Those are things that our students use up every year, and so it's things like Word journals and handwriting books. Our math books, we use up every year because the kids write in them, and so that is the Houghton Mifflin Order. We have some reading materials that get used up or sent home for the kids to read at home, paperback versions. So you can see there's a number of things there. This, unfortunately, every year, this climbs. At one point in time, Cheryl and I could get by with about $20,000, and we've cut a number of items out that we don't get anymore, just because they're too expensive. But as you can see, it's 100, it's $30,000, a little bit over that. And so that was the purpose that we asked, part of the referendum was to increase the curriculum budget, because at one time, we had $100,000 in the curriculum budget, which would be for the current curriculum purchases and the consumables. And as you can see, we were 116,400 for the math and 30,100 for consumables, so we're definitely in that 150 mark. And so we were using the extra money from the referendum.
Can I get a motion to approve those consumables?
I'll make that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next, personnel action.
We have a long list of personnel action, a few resignations from different positions, coaches and advisors, and then also quite a few teachers that we have hired recently, have done interviews for, and we're, our board book document isn't updated, so we're digging for the updated document.
We did discuss them all, though.
Yeah, we did discuss them.
It's just the last one was not on there, is that?
I believe, yep.
Well, I updated it, but I don't know what happened with
Oh, we know We've, we've seen it, and we've talked about it.
Yeah, Dina's just getting the document from a different location.
All right.
Okay, so this one's updated.
Yep.
So you can see, we've got some coach and advisor position resignations, new employees. I'll just run through new employees real quick. Drivers Ed, summer school substitute, that's a combination position with Mr. Meyer. Elementary Title I para, Mike Kelly, alternative ed teacher and head wrestling coach, Greta McCarty, new library media specialist slash technology integrator, Ramona Lockwood, Mike Rose, sharing a, the position of FBLA in school store, Heidi Williams, high school student counselor, Becky Larsung, middle school English halftime, Paula Johnson, special ed teacher. She will be at the elementary and also head seventh grade volleyball coach, Kate Weisenbeck, eighth grade volleyball assistant, Ashley Hansen, seventh grade volleyball assistant, Esme Luckenberg, eighth grade volleyball head, and Justin Shu, resigning from middle school football and taking girls JV golf. Quite a list of new positions.
Do we have enough to, I didn't even ask that question, but I remember a couple of years ago, we didn't have enough for a JV. Is that pending on numbers for JV golf? Remember that, a couple of years ago, we had like five?
That would be pending on numbers. If we don't have enough numbers, we don't have the coach.
Okay, and how many do we have, eh, whatever, it's not important to me. All right, yeah, it's whatever. Okay, so can I get a motion to accept those as a whole? Keith, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Move on to buildings and grounds year-end expenses. So we're here to ask, statutorily, the board can grant authority to committees or to specific board members. So we're here today because we're at the end of the year, and we have some items in building and grounds that we need to purchase as part of our year-end expenditures, and we are asking Keith and I to have that delegated authority to be able to approve those purchases, because they have to be done by the end of June. So we're having a building and grounds meeting that you have not set up a time yet for this week.
We're going to here.
Uh huh, okay, and, and through that, then, then we just, we would ask for delegated authority to be able to approve those expenditures, because some of them are over $5,000. So we obviously would normally bring that to a full board, unless you want to come back for a special meeting for our recommendations. We would, we would ask for the authority as long as we don't go over our district budget for the year, that we get that delegated authority to make those year-end expenditures for buildings and grounds.
And we have some pretty significant projects we're looking at, right?
Yes, yep, and everybody should, I mean, they're aware of that. It's just a matter of how we're
It's items we've talked about.
It's items we talked about, and like I said, it won't go any, any over the budgets. It's just whether we're, we just need to, some of them, we need to be able to get in before the budget year is over with.
Yeah.
We can supply, obviously, the list afterwards, but I don't think there'll be any surprises as to what we're talking about. It's all stuff that
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Lynn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and this will be obviously just for this one month, that delegated authority. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So do you want to set that for Wednesday afternoon? Or we can set it after?
Well, it has
Yeah.
We'll set it after the meeting. Okay, it's good, and then everybody else doesn't have to sit around while we stare at our calendars. Policies, second readings.
Okay, we've debated and discussed the unpaid meal charges. Ms. Nelson wasn't here, wasn't able to be here this evening, but has been to the last couple of meetings, and these changes were sent forward. This is actually in a second reading now, again, for the unpaid meal charges. There were some changes that were made based on discussion and recommendations, and so we recommend the changes indicated down lower in the policy. Okay, so this is the updated version, and the dollar amount was changed to inform families earlier, and also the dollar amount, and also, I'll just mention that the school district of Amory does not partake in the practice of shaming students whatsoever at all. The other policy is a wellness
Before we, let's, let's take this one at a time, just because I have a question. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve it. I believe she addressed some of the changes that were up concern and just putting forth, I think especially under number seven, what we don't do.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dale? That's why I wanted, I wanted to make sure Chelsea's concerns were taken care of before we moved on to that. So you're good with this?
Yes, and like Mr. Cooktop said, we don't do it, but I just thought it'd be a good idea to put it in writing that we don't do it.
Nothing wrong with that. Nothing wrong with that. Chelsea's happy with it, we're all good then. Really, I, it's, thanks for your extra work on that. I think it made a better document. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one's done.
Okay, and then the second policy for second reading is wellness policy, which, again, Stacy Nelson, our nutrition director, worked on extensively, and it brings us into compliance with federal guidelines that are required to be in place by June 30th or July 1st.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Dale, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chelsea, any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I guess this is a little bit retract, or not retracting, but backing up, but also as it relates to meals and, and donations, I guess, we had a, an anonymous contact this week to Twila once again, that there's a couple of ladies that want to donate $700 to unpaid meal charges at the school district. So it's our third contribution in six or eight months that is being generously and anonymously made to the school district. So I just want to mention that. We greatly appreciate it, and it's a heartfelt donation. Thank you.
I, you know, I think it's important to mention, not necessarily correlating to that policy, but just a reminder to families that there's, please, if you need help, to call the district, and please, even if you don't think you qualify to apply for the federal, the free and reduced rates, it's there to help you. So apply for it. There's no, it's, there are ways that it also helps the district. So it's not a bad thing, and it, now's the time for anybody who's having difficulty and know that they may next year to reach out to the district office. It's confidential, or to the, to the nutrition office, and to, to apply for that help so that we can make sure every kid gets to eat. So that's my two cents.
And it's a good idea to do that before, before school starts, so your child can eat, because it isn't retroactive.
Right.
So if something, your financial situation changes, you should do that as soon as you can, because the lunches eaten prior to that are still under your old status.
Right.
So, you know, anybody can come in and fill it out.
It's, it's a way to help, please.
It definitely is.
I don't think we can speak emphatically enough that if, apply for it. It's there if, and in the scope of life, if we don't use it, somebody else will. So if there's families out there that can utilize it, I think it's just really, really important to, if you haven't done it before, reach out. The worst that'll happen is say, oh, you're not quite eligible.
And Dina mentioned too, that the form is online, so you could print the form and fill it out and mail it in, if, if you're not comfortable personally walking in, but you can find that form online too.
Yep. Great. Okay, your kids, your kids aren't shamed?
No.
Nobody knows that they're on any sort of help. It's, it's really painless and nameless to go through that process. So please do that, so that we can make sure that all our kids are eating well. So that's all I had there. We do not need a closed session. Does anybody else have anything they want to bring up? We're going back to closed session? Oh. Okay, I guess we're going back to closed session. So can I get a motion to return to closed session to consider promotion, employment, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which this governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19851C? We are talking for how long?
Five to 10 minutes.
Is it an administrative contract? Okay, so we'll be talking about it in administrative contract. Now you're, I'm back on page with you. All right, can I get that motion?
I'll make that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Chelsea?
Yes.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Keith? And I vote yes, so we're closed. Thank you, everybody.